The United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll have the roll call, Ms. DeSoto.
Ms. Lee? Dr. McKay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's okay, Ms. Lee?
Attendants. Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Dr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass? Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. King?
Present.
Ms. Snodgrass has a work conflict. Now we'll have the mission and goals.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing; Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members; Whole child development is vital to our educational system; Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical and career, and social-emotional learning; And our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
District's 2020 to 2025 district goals are: Social and emotional wellness; To produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish; To prepare contemporary citizens; To modernize, expand learning experiences; To prepare students as critical thinkers; Problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society; And finally, diversity and inclusion; To establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you, Dr. Larson and Dr. Shelton. Next, can I have a motion to approve the official minutes from the December 19th, 2024 regular board meeting?
Shelton, move.
For a second.
I'm going to second it in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have report from students, so we're going to start with Haverford Middle School Student Representative, Naomi Ludwig.
Good evening, my, is that working? Okay. Good evening, my name is Naomi Ludwig. I'm an eighth grader here at HMS, and I'm excited to be informing you all two years now about what's been happening at Haverford Middle School and any recent updates. First, I'd like to thank every member of the school board. We appreciate all of your time, leadership, and dedication, and consideration in the process of making our school environment and HMS community better all around. Your hours of hard work and thoughtful commitment to the public education has made an incredible difference in our lives, and we are forever grateful. Our winter sports season is continuing strong, and our teams are having a great time learning teamwork, improving their own skills, and competing each week. Today, the varsity wrestling team had their second match of the season that, and results will be posted tomorrow. Yesterday, the boys and girls seventh and eighth grade basketball team played Ridley. Every Haverford player had showed persistence, determination, constantly throughout every game of the year. Additionally, we've started working on our second benchmark assessments. Students and teachers included have been focusing and honing in on understanding our progress and where we can strive to improve. We continue to stay committed in doing our best. Our next upcoming event is Wellness Day on Friday, January 17th. Teachers provide fun activities to sign up for and participate through the day as, wait, as well as support every student. We receive a special schedule with sessions you can choose to be within your, you can be with your friends. And my personal favorite, an early dismissal. Though nothing is fully set in stone, Student Government, a group of Haverford students, me included, are working on creating a fun and cohesive school community as well. Topics that have been discussed are creating a fundraiser, painting locker rooms for more school hype, and having a seventh grade Valentine's Dance, and more. Last but not least, we are excited to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day Monday, January 20th. HMS teachers have been helping us grow our knowledge and understanding about Dr. King's crucial impact on history of America. During this time, many of us will be reflecting on his ideas about equality, justice, and he never stopped providing. The change that changed the course of history through his civil rights. Thank you so much again for letting me speak tonight. Have a fantastic rest of your evening. Go Eagles!
And next up, we'll have Haverford High School Student Representative, Lucy Filken.
All right, good evening. That was great, mine's not that long. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Lucy Filken, and I'm a senior at Haverford High School in the class of 2025. This week is Keystone's Week. After a snow day on Monday, many Haverford students have been spending their mornings before class taking algebra, literature, and biology Keystone tests. I don't have any Keystones left, so I've been enjoying the three-hour delay in the mornings this week. Tomorrow morning, a small group of track athletes are going to Penn State to compete. This is our only regular season overnight meet, and it was a blast last year, and I'm excited to be going back again this season. Last week, the, the team was at UPenn, at the new UPenn indoor facility, it was great. In other sports news, ice hockey is seven and O in the Central League. Their next game is, uh, is in Westchester against Downingtown. The cheer team is the district champions, and the Central League meet is this weekend at the high school. Girls' basketball is heading to Boston this weekend. It has been a smooth and easy transition back into classes after winter break. Many of my classes are starting to prepare for finals and the fast approaching end of the semester. I'm looking forward to starting my new schedule of classes in a few weeks. Happy New Year, and thank you for the opportunity to share some Haverford highlights.
Thank you, Lucy. So next up, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. King. Uh, it's my pleasure to step in for Dr. Rujie, who's not feeling well this evening. Uh, I'd like to begin my remarks, uh, with a recognition, as we heard from our student representatives. Uh, this is, uh, the school board director recognition month. And, uh, so we'd like to take the opportunity to honor and appreciate the invaluable contributions that are made by our dedicated school directors, who you see seated before you this evening. Uh, as elected officials in our community, our board members devote countless hours to fulfilling the governing responsibilities that they have. Uh, they serve as liaisons to county organizations, they participate in committee meetings, they attend countless events, and their unwavering commitment to students' academic success and well-being is truly commendable. Our board members generously give of their time and their talents to the community, uh, to the students, and to the schools in our district. They strive to provide our children with the best educational opportunities available, and for that, we extend our heartfelt thanks. Uh, tonight, we express our gratitude and recognition for the pivotal role that our board members play in shaping the educational landscape of the school district of Haverford Township. At your seats, you will find a, a small token of our appreciation, and we hope that you remember this appreciation and, and the thanks that we feel for you each time you use them. So thank you all. A couple other items on, uh, my list of remarks here, I just wanted to give a little bit of an update, uh, for those of you who, uh, received, everyone should have received communication last evening about a breach in cybersecurity. Today, we were again in communication with Power School to learn more about the cybersecurity breach. Power School has assured us that the effective, affected districts, uh, that the, this breach has been contained, and that they have taken additional precautionary steps to protect their systems, including our data. They've also assured us that the unauthorized access that occurred does not impact any of our other systems, and that we can continue with our daily operations, including kindergarten registration, which starts on Monday. Uh, so that is definitely a key. Our, our in-house, uh, IT team is constantly monitoring the security of our systems to identify and minimize as quickly as possible any potential or unauthorized access. So we will continue to provide updates just as we receive them from Power School, so you can expect to hear more from us as we learn more from them. As you heard me just eight kindergarten, I'll say it again, kindergarten registration starts on Monday, so if you know anyone who is looking to register a kindergartner, that begins at 7:00 PM. All registrations are completed online, uh, and there are instructions on our website that you can see now. Uh, starting this year, actually, families will be able to upload documents. It's not necessary to upload them for the initial registration, which occurs on Monday, but they will be eventually necessary for final registration. So just a, a little, uh, PSA there to get folks, uh, registered. Uh, as was mentioned again by our students, we did have our first inclement weather day, as we call them, uh, of the year for, on Monday, uh, also known as snow days. We wanted to just remind families that if you want to get a text message notification, you actually have to opt in to text messaging now, uh, so that comply, that it's to be it for us to be in compliance with wireless carrier requirements, and to protect you against unsolicited text messages. Uh, you have to actually text the word "yes," Y-E-S, to six seven five eight seven, uh, in order to opt into receiving that critical information from the district. That information's also on the website, and then it's going to come home again in our Haverford happenings, so, you know, expect you all to remember it now, just, just a little reminder there. Uh, as far, uh, next topic for me is athletics, and I'd like to congratulate our, uh, football coach, Luke Dougherty, who was named PA Football News Coaches Select Six A Coach of the Year. Uh, we look forward to celebrating, uh, Mr. Dougherty at a February board meeting, so we'll have more detail then. And now, although I don't see him, I think he may be here, I was hoping to welcome Mr. DeSina? Oh, he's right there! That's why I don't see him, he's not in the crowd, he's ready to go! I wanted to welcome, uh, Mr. Greg DeSina, our high school athletic director, as well as an assistant principal, to come to the podium so that we may recognize the accomplishments of members of our high school cross-country team.
Before I do, I just want to shout out Lucy. She does such a wonderful job of celebrating everyone, she is the ultimate citizen stewardess. I have a mind of my best state's office. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to celebrate best group of runners who come through Haverford High School. No social media posts, no try, no newspaper, no work address, uh, could do justice to honor the history, and this coaching staff, I would highly recommend it. In this group's time, they've won multiple state championship, district championships, runners-up, and state champion in track and field. Finally, tonight, to honor individuals as well as team state championships. I run. I've been described as a runner in many terms, it's a lazy guy, George, for my athletes, but I do have the luxury of being able to run after school a lot of days with our cross-country team. I get to say hello to them, they fly by. Uh, they ask me, "How many miles are you getting in today?", uh, to which I reply, "I'll try for two." Uh, but I learned to stop asking back how many they're running, because they'll say, "Yeah, that's what I'm running." This group in particular has profoundly navigated what it means to be individual competitor in this group. With all the coaches and athletes working hard towards a group of their own, that holds for themselves, in a way that leads to victory and celebration. There's a saying across country, "You're only as strong as your hip hop." Well, this group dominated one trip, and its coaching staff has helped to ensure that our cross-country student athletes won three fifths, smart working, fine, well-rounded, focused on academics, loves running, and is a contributor to their school. The group of student athletes, one of us has met and experienced their teammates, and I think that's the same longer speech, and I'll just note their accomplishments. So, in 2024-25 season alone, this girls' cross-country team, uh, has won the Paul Short, Paul Short Championship, Delaware County Champion, Central League Champion, PIAA District One, PIAA Runner-Up, they qualified with PIAA State, and finally, this group has your 22nd for PIAA girls. I'm going to introduce, uh, I'm going to call up our, our student athletes individually and their individual accomplishments. Like I said, it's unbelievable, the school, me learning, unlike a football player, they're learning the culture of every sport, and cross-country is something, it takes a special boost to be an athlete, and having an individual who, all these girls, bonded. So I'll call up each individual and highlight their accomplishments. Our first student athlete, they developed German in the member of the 2024 state championship.
Prue Frain is honorable mention all Central. Uh, she is a National Merit Scholar and a member of your 2024-25 Central, uh, PIAA State Championship Team. Anastasia Harmon is honorable mention all Central and a member of the 2024-25 PIAA State Championship Team. Evelyn Awad is honorable mention all Delco, second team all Central, and a member of the 2024-25 PIAA State Championships. Ryan Dankinus is second team all Delco, second team all Central, and a member of your State Championship Team. Micah Haskins is first team all Delco, first team all Central, medaled 15th at districts. Mike is attending University of Maryland, Baltimore County next fall, and is a state champion. Cameron McGinn is first team all Delco, first team all Central, medaled seventh at districts, medaled 16th at states, and is attending University of Pittsburgh next fall. Congrats, Dean. Olivia Cislik is first team all Delco, first team all Central, medaled sixth at districts, medaled fifth at the PIAA State Championship. Can you walk slower, I got a couple more things to do? Medaled fifth at the PIAA State Championship, which is the highest, uh, a Haverford runner's ever finished at states. She was named Delco Runner of the Year for the, third? Third year? Uh, and this year was named first team all-state team. Olivia's attending Stanford University to run cross-country and track and field next fall. Olivia, we have, um, one for states and then one for a first team all-state. Uh, all these student athletes are strong competitors in strong academic standing and are an absolute delight to talk to on a day-to-day basis. Finally, we'd like to honor and celebrate Coach Laura Clinton, who last year was the PIAA NFHS Cross-Country Coach of the Year, and this year was named Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association Girls' Cross-Country Coach of the Year. Coach Clinton, yeah, let's give it up for Coach Clinton, please. Coach Clinton was supported by Elizabeth Clinton and Ryan Comstock, and is joined tonight by Coach Matt Wells.
Ms. 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 Ms.
Go for it. Go for it.
All right, so that brings us to public comment. And I, you're more than welcome to stay the entire meeting. If there's anyone that wants to leave now, I know some are seated here. You're more than welcome to do that, too, okay? All right, so, public comment. The board values public comment. There are two opportunities on the agenda for members of the community to provide public comment during the meeting. The first opportunity on the agenda for public comment is to allow members of the community to speak on items listed on the agenda. The second opportunity on the agenda is towards the end of the meeting, which allows members of the community to speak on any topic. Public comment allows for residents of the township to speak for three minutes. A timer will be set at the start of your comments and a alarm will sound, indicating that your time has been completed. Should you have any materials for members of the board, please leave them at the end of the table with Mr. Tessa for later distribution to the board. Please note that if appropriate, a member of the administration may follow up with you at a later date. Please state your name, confirm your residency, and the timer will begin for your allotted three-minute remarks. All right, so first up, I have Jason Baxter.
Hi, my name is Jason Baxter. I live on Sue Ellen Drive in Haverford Town and have two children at Haverford High School. I was one of 12 people who spoke at the July 18th School Board Meeting to express my disappointment that the school board voted against putting solar panels on Chatham Park and to request that you reconsider this decision. Now I'm back to say thank you for reconsidering this decision and to strongly encourage you to vote yes for putting, for the resolution to pursue the Solar for Schools for both Lynnwood and Chatham Park. I teach chemical engineering at Drexel University, where I lead a research group working on solar energy conversion. I teach courses on fundamentals of solar cells and solutions to climate change. So I'm very familiar with the environmental benefits that solar panels offer. My family felt that this was so important that we put solar panels on our own house 12 years ago. Solar for Schools is a fantastic new program that your consultant estimates would supply 100% of Chatham's electricity and over 50% of Lynnwood's. With total savings on electricity of over $1.2 million over the next 30 years, the financial benefits are clear. Solar panels produce electricity with 10 times lower carbon footprint than our current grid mix, so the environmental benefits are clear, too. Having solar panels on our schools would also offer educational opportunities for our students. For the last several years, I've been spending an entire day each year talking with all of the students in the sixth grade science classes. I show a short presentation about solar panels. Then we go outside and do some experiments with solar cells, and we race solar-powered cars, and everybody has a great time. On one of my slides, I showed the huge benefits that we could gain by putting solar panels on district schools. The students love this idea and are so excited about this possibility. When my son was in fourth grade, he and two friends won the Cooper Town Science Fair with their presentation about how they could power all of Cooper Town by covering just half the roof with solar panels. A few years later, Bryn Mawr College Professor Victor Dane and a group of college students showed that adding solar makes economic sense, too. Professor Dane and his students this week are at a national math conference in Seattle, presenting their work on analyzing putting solar panels on Cooper Town and Lynnwood and showing how solar can be used as a great learning opportunity for students. If Haverford installs solar panels, Victor and I would be happy to work with Jeff Nesbit and the district's science teachers to help build science and engineering curriculum around those solar panels at all levels, from elementary through high school. And this would help Haverford educators to be leaders in the area, in this field. Solar panels are already a good idea because of their benefits for the environment and for reducing operating costs for the school. And the additional educational opportunities make this a win-win-win. We've had many adults speak in favor of solar at the July School Board Meeting, again in October, to encourage you to go down this path of solar for schools and at finance and facilities meetings. As you can see, there is still broad support for solar among adults in our community. And today, you'll also hear more from the students in our district.
If you could just please conclude your remarks.
One more sentence. On behalf of all of us, I strongly encourage you to vote yes on the two Solar for Schools resolutions tonight. Thank you.
The next person I have is Libby Matz.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Libby Matz, and I am a sixth grader at Haverford Middle School. I was a Cooper Town student from kindergarten through fifth grade. During my time there, I learned to value of, the value of being a good citizen and the importance of being a role model to the younger grades and my peers. When I was in fifth grade, I was elected student council president. My goals were to eliminate styrofoam in the cafeteria and help implement composting and gardening. Now, Cooper Town uses reusable lunch trays and flatware. Students compost 200 pounds of food, eat food waste each week from the cafeteria. And we have a native pollinator garden thriving in the courtyard. Our student group is called the Leafy Lunch League, and we are really proud of the work we did to help Cooper Town take these big steps toward, toward a more sustainable future. Haverford Township students care immensely about the environment. We remind them frequently of the changing climate as we start elementary school during, as we started elementary school during the pandemic and has to deal with the poor air quality from the wildfires in Canada. We need your help. Today, you will vote on putting solar panels on Lynnwood and Chatham Elementary Schools. You are in the unique position to take a big step forward towards a more sustainable future for our community. You have a chance to actually improve the health of our students and our neighbors by reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. If your concern is the cost, solar panels pay for themselves in about 10 years. And unlike renewable energy credits, they aren't just for show. They actually create energy and share it with the people living around these schools. Why let big companies buy our credits to make themselves greener when we can directly benefit from this energy? I hope we're all on the same page as to, as to what is important here. Please vote to get solar panels on Chatham and Lynnwood, and hopefully, our beloved Cooper Town will do so in the future. Tonight, you will have the chance to make a real change and show our community how much you value our future. Thank you, I'm Libby Matz.
Next up, I have Nora Sullivan.
Hello, I just want to make it clear, this is not my script. Unfortunately, my friend and peer Nora Sullivan came down with a fever today, so I will be speaking for her. I am Hannah Moon. Hi, my name is Nora Sullivan. I attended Haverford Middle School, and I went to Cooper Town Elementary for five years. Today, I'm going to give you a few reasons on why you should invest in solar panels on the roofs of the school. This will help the earth and our schools because when fossil fuels are burned, greenhouse gases are released into the atmosphere. This isn't good since it traps heat in our atmosphere, causing global warming, which leads to more extreme weather and more natural disasters in the world. In my time at Cooper Town, we started the Leafy Lunch League, which is a club where we tried to make our school more environmentally friendly, which we did by composting, recycling, and teaching kids how to do this. Also, we started a garden and began planting different plants and vegetables to attract more wildlife. This made me feel like I was doing something that could make the world better than it was. I worked on all the projects, including every day at lunch, taking out the compost bags to the bins outside for mother compost to pick up. We would like it if you would vote today to apply for, to get funding for solar panels to help lessen the school district's carbon footprint. This is going to cost a lot of money, but if we get the grant funding, it'll cost so much less. Certainly, in the long run, it'll cost less than the green energy you've been paying for. Also, over time, this will slowly but surely give you your money back. How this will affect me and my peers is because it'll make everyone feel like we can make a difference in the world, as well as help me achieve my goal of making the world a better place. I could achieve that goal by just getting you to agree the solar panel. Even if it's just a small step, it's a small step in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Penelope Taylor.
My name is Penelope Taylor, and I'm in the fourth grade at Cooper Town Elementary School. We need solar panels because it will save you money while helping the environment. You'll have to pay a lot upfront, but you'll make it back and more. The government is even handing out grants to get the solar panels right now. But that's not all. It will inspire others to help the environment and teach kids we can do something about climate change. Lastly, it is the best environment, it is the best energy for the environment. My experience in the eco club being third-grade leader has taught me that helping the environment is hard, but it's worth it. It's hard because you have to give up some lunch and have to remind kids to compost. So I'm asking you to get solar panels for our schools. It may be a little bit hard, but it will be worth it. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Next up, Mikey Romano.
Mikey's a little shy. This is Mikey Romano. He's my grandson. He attends Lynnwood Elementary. This is his father, Mike Romano. Mikey just came from the Cub Scout meeting where he's missing the pizza party so that he can bring to you this wonderful poster, which we'll show you. All the kids in the pack put this together, and they were talking about solar energy. And Mikey has something special he wants to tell you about his house.
It has solar panels.
It sure does. So what, what, did you want to ask something special of this, um, school board?
Vote yes.
Thank you, from PAC 332.
Next up, I have Lena Fadul.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lena Fadul, and I'm a senior at Haverford High School. I'm also a proud officer of our school's environmental club. As a club, we're committed to raising awareness about pressing environmental issues and taking action through initiatives such as creek cleanups and removing invasive plants. We do all of this in hopes of making a positive impact on our community's environment and education. And I hope our efforts as a club continue long after we graduate. Tonight, I'm here in support of installing solar panels on our district's elementary schools. This proposal directly aligns with the goals of not only our environmental club, but also the townships. As students, we strongly believe that this initiative is not just an investment in preserving our environment, but also in the future of our schools and community. Speaking of the future, the long-term benefits of switching to renewable energy are numerous. First, the electricity generated from solar energy has far less carbon dioxide emissions than electricity generated from fossil fuels. And transitioning to solar power offers significant savings over time. By becoming less reliant on non-renewable energy, the district can redirect funds towards other crucial areas of education. Now, I'm not an expert on energy, but at this point, I'm pretty sure I'm an expert on being a Haverford student. The importance of this project goes beyond economics and emissions. It's about education and empowerment. Installing solar panels on elementary schools is a visible and meaningful way to teach students, even at a young age, about renewable energy and the importance of protecting our planet. For many of us, we were first exposed to the dangers of our rapidly changing environment and climate at a young age. We were taught to reduce, reuse, recycle, and to take shorter showers. But why not go beyond that? I remember sitting in sixth grade science class learning about renewable energy. A guest speaker came and spoke about the detriments of fossil fuels and their contributions to polluted air, water, oil spills, and much, much more. Then he spoke about solar panels they had installed in their homes and other forms of renewable energy that we see, that we see emerging around us today. Now imagine the inspiration and curiosity that could grow if younger students could see and learn from solar panels on their own school buildings. This project sends a powerful message that our district cares about fostering a sense of environmental activism in its students. And by implementing solar panel, solar power, we're not only protecting the planet, but also preparing the next generation to continue this work. It's an act of love for our township and responsibility to not only our planet, but also to our youth, to educate them to do the same. Thank you.
I don't have anyone else signed up for a public comment for items related to the agenda. However, is anyone else that would like to speak? You may. Seeing none, we'll continue. Section five takes us to board reports. The first being Delaware County Community College, Dr. McKay.
Uh, no report.
Thank you. The next being the DCIU, Dr. Larson.
The next, no report, but the next meeting of the DCIU board will take place on February 5th, 2025. Also on this evening's agenda, there's an item for a DCIU Board of Directors candidate nomination. I have decided to step away from the role. I have been doing that since February of 2022, and it's been a complete honor and a privilege to represent Haverford at the DCIU. I had a chance to be chair of their education committee for the board there, to work closely with Dr. Edelberg and her cabinet, and also work with Ms. Karwoski, who's currently the board president, and meet and make new friends and colleagues across the county. And I'm just completely in awe of the just depth and breadth of the work that the IU does to support students around the county and particularly programs that support our students here in Haverford. But it is time to pass the torch, so I'm looking forward this evening to our board nominating a new representative, who will begin with the IU board starting February 5th.
Thank you. The Legislative Council, Dr. McKay. I'm sorry, Dr. Shelton, my apologies.
Yeah, the Legislative Council met yesterday, and the Assembly actually convened the day before, so there's not a lot to really to talk about the meeting, but the number of bills have been introduced or reintroduced that affect education. But the council felt that it would take a month or two to see which bill would actually move forward. Okay, that's okay. So, so one thing to note is Shapiro will present a preliminary budget on February 4th, and so this has implications for the fair funding formula. So the council's looking forward to giving a report on that next meeting. February 4th, February 24th at 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM, the House Appropriations will have budget hearings for the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And May 16th, there will be a legislative breakfast, speakers to be determined. There was a brief update on charter reform by Larry Feinberg. There's an Arizona charter school that uses AI instead of teachers. They're applying for, to operate in Pennsylvania. And then there's expected to be a new charter audit released this year. The last charter audit was done in 2016. So that's a brief report, and hopefully, in the next meeting will be the second Wednesday in February, and we'll learn more about what legislation will be advanced in the new session.
Thank you. For PSBA, Ms. Swederman?
Yes, as a member of PSBA, our board and administration staff have access to a variety of their trainings and programs. One that I saw advertised for teaching is, for teachers, is in February Teach Rock. PSBA with Stevie Van Zant and his nonprofit Teach Rock have a professional development for teachers. It's free. It will show ways to use music in curriculums with math and social and emotional wellness. And there's also an open access curriculum. And um there's also an open access curriculum that goes along with it. That one might be of interest to some teachers. Uh, there are trainings uh on specific school compliance matters like right-to-know law and Office of Open Records. Those are upcoming in January and February. There's a school safety summit in March. And um there is a Building Stronger School Communities Through Civil Discourse Workshop, February first. Um, I might be able to sign up and go to that one if other board members are interested. And for um members of the community who might be interested in running for school board, there is a school board candidate webinar on January fifteenth at six o'clock. And uh PSBA also has some guidance and uh kind of online materials to help people who are interested or considering running for school board.
Thank you. And can you continue with finance and facilities?
Yes, we have not had um a meeting since uh December, but uh the next Finance and Facility Committee meeting is February thirteenth. That's a Thursday.
Dr. Larson, Curriculum and Pupil Services.
The next meeting for Curriculum and Pupil Services Committee will take place on Thursday, January sixteenth from six thirty to eight thirty PM. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Snogress is not here to report on policy, however, there we have policy nine fifteen coming for a second reading later on in the agenda. Related to the Board President's report, just to give a brief update in terms of the superintendent search. Um, as I mentioned during the last uh board meeting, that the application process um is underway. The position closed December ninth of twenty twenty-four. The district received about thirty applications from various highly qualified candidates, um, including many sitting superintendents and assistant superintendents across the region and the nation. In the coming weeks, the school board of directors will conduct interviews to narrow the pool of applicants to select a finalist. As part of the final selection process, the district will host a community forum in late February or early March of twenty twenty-five to introduce the finalists for the superintendent position. This forum will provide an opportunity for stakeholders to engage directly by reviewing the candidate's resume and submitting questions. Submitted questions will be categorized into themes and addressed during the forum. Following the event, community members will also have a chance to meet and interact with the finalists in a more informal setting, ensuring transparency of the process. The district remains committed to maintaining confidentiality of all applicants, especially those currently serving as superintendents. Each board member has agreed to a confidentiality pledge to protect the privacy of candidates to ensure a professional selection process. As such, please understand that board members are not permitted to discuss any details related to the applicants or the interview process. Alright. That brings us to section six, Finance and Facilities. We'll start with the bill list. Can I have a recommendation to approve the disbursements for payment totaling one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight, I'm sorry, ninety-six cents?
Larson moved?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six B, Accelerated Budget Opt-Out Resolution. Can I have a motion to approve the accelerated budget opt-out resolution for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget?
Wait, I mean, moved?
For a second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Um, for the benefit of the public, would Mr. Tessa, would you be able to give a little overview of what this um resolution is?
So each year, um, the state provides us with the Act One Index, which is the index that allow we are able to raise taxes up to that limit. Um, so this resolution would basically say that we are acknowledging that we have up to four percent that we are allowed to raise the budget. Um, not that we will go to that point, but it gives us that flexibility and it lets PDE know that, yes, we're not going to exceed that. We're not going to um submit a preliminary budget this month because we are um going to go with that opt-out resolution. Because otherwise, we would have to um do an advance budget now and then we have to go forward with trying to raise above that four percent.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, item six C. Can I have a motion to for the, let me repeat that. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the authorized official resolution for the Solar for Schools Program Grant, designating the Board President and Board Secretary as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the district and the Department of Community and Economic Development to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant or loan for Chatham Park and Linwood Elementary Schools?
Which one's moved? Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Something I'll point out, um, we have not had a Finance and Facility Committee meeting since the last meeting, but we did receive some information from our consultant, uh, uh, Sontro Engineering. Um, I believe some of this may have been presented at the last meeting, but we also received some additional information from him, which was given to the board. Just want to point out a couple of uh of highlights of uh of of this analysis. He looked at um the 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 finances related to installing solar panels on Chatham and and at Linwood. At Chatham Park, he actually found that the electrical energy offset would be a hundred and one percent. Um, at a hundred, hundred one percent. And the um with the solar for for schools grant, the positive cash flow, the amount of time it would take to essentially pay for the installation of these is under seven years. And then without, even without the solar for for schools grant, if we were to to install solar on Chatham, the positive uh cash flow payback would be in tw- in just over twelve years. So any way you slice it, really, um, at at Chatham Park, this would be a net positive cash flow. Linwood shows something similar. It it would produce about fifty-four percent of the total energy used by by Linwood. With the solar for for schools grant, the payback period on this would be under eight years, even without the solar for schools grant. And there are a couple of different scenarios with Linwood, but I won't bore you with with some of the gritty uh details. Even without solar for for schools grants, positive cash flow would be under twelve years. So if we forget entirely about what this does with for for the environment and it does, and it would do great things, this is something that that as we've heard many people from the public say this evening, it provides an educational benefit to our kids and it would save money over time. So looking at this, it's, to me, it's somewhat of an of a no-brainer. Um, even if this were something that was not solar, if it was some other program that we had that would provide an educational opportunity and save the district money, I think it's something that 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 we have to to uh go for. Obviously, with the solar for schools grant makes it a lot easier. And this um resolution would allow us to pursue these grants, which I believe close at the end of of this month. So I really think it's important to vote on this soon, get this um submitted, and hope for the best.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Tessa, could you just provide um the board as well as the community with a brief overview in terms of the questions that have been raised over the coming weeks? Um, and just provide some more insight as it relates to this resolution?
Sure, absolutely. So the applications uh for this program opened up on November first and will close at the end of this month. So for any um eligible applicants, that would be the time to um get into the program if they were going to proceed. Um, as far as how the additional funds would be or how the funds would be advanced for each of the programs, um, when you look at Linwood, um, the funds would come from your capo- your committed capital funds. So until um the ITC payments come in and if and when solar for schools were to be approved and come in and the Act Twenty-nine reimbursement, um, you would be looking at a net cost of three hundred thousand, but in advance of that, you would have to fund six hundred and seventy-six thousand to support the Linwood program. As far as Chatham, uh, that total program cost was nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Um, your net cost would be four hundred and thirty-eight, but in the meantime, you would need to fund that nine eighty-nine. Um, and as we um were provided with in a previous um presentation by our bond counsel from PFM, that would be part of one of our bond issues that we do in the renovation projects. So it would be two different sources that we would use the funds from. Um, and it's important to know, um, you know, the question was asked, well, what if we don't, what if we are awarded and we don't do the program? DCED would really like interested candidates to apply for the program. So they feel like if you're not one hundred percent into it, uh, probably not the best time to apply in this round. Potentially, you know, there could be another round of funds that's, you know, it's unsure at this time. Um, and solar for schools is a reimbursement program, so that's important to know that if we're awarded, um, which would not happen until May, when they meet with the Commonwealth Financing Authority, that's when they would make their decisions. Um, it's a reimbursement program, so if we're awarded in May, we would not receive funds until we start spending the money. Um, so the money would be allocated out there for us, um, we would draw down on it uh with submission of invoices. If there were any funds left over, if the project, you know, bids came in and they were lower than expected, those those surplus funds would go back into the program for other applicants, uh, whether there's another round or if other applicants were came up as a shortfall in their programs. Um, so that's in there as well. So I touched on May. Uh, Mr. Salantano, you know, provided us with the solar facility site assessments. Those two buildings, Linwood and Chatham Park, being the most advantageous to get into this program. Not saying that we couldn't do it in the other buildings and maybe that's something we look at down the road, you know, if this passes and there's continued interest in looking at our other buildings, but at least for the purposes of this program, those buildings were the most um advantageous at this time.
Questions from board members?
So can um we just get a clarification that the vote tonight is to pass the resolutions as we are applying?
Yes.
So we are not um committing the expenditure of any dollars or certain budgets because you said that the like the bids for this work, while it's been outlined and proposed in these analyses, we don't have, we're not voting on this cost and this pricing and the contractor yet and all of that, that's down the road. What we're voting on is to apply for the solar for schools grant.
Right, and to to provide the authority to Dr. Kane and myself to do any applications or any paperwork needed to get into that program.
Any other questions from board members?
And just to clarify, I know the question had come up about the um dates, and these resolutions were from the last meeting, so the dates will change and the dollar amounts will change slightly. You have to increase to match what we're available to get in the program.
And so then we vote tonight to apply. The uh award would be announced in May and then other actions would come before the board about what about um which of these two? Um, or both of them and in with which contractor and all that, that would all come up in May or June then?
Right, so in May or June, um, once we are, if and when we are approved, then that would initiate the bid process. So um we would again probably work with Mr. Salantano um to have a bid packet put together. Um, it would be advertised through a as a GISA program, so it's a guaranteed energy savings program. Um, so where that contractor would be uh basically responsible for meeting the guarantee that they state we can uh they can make. So he he helped us with the application. Um, I guess if we were to engage him further to do the bids, that would be for the mission.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up brings us to item six D, Hometown Ticketing Agreement. Can I have a motion to approve the one-year agreement between Hometown Ticket and the School District of Haverford Township for digital ticketing services?
Larson moved?
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have a question about um, I don't know if Rob Anderson is still here, but um so the fees associated with this particular structure, did we, did we look at other um solutions that would, with different fee structures? It wasn't clear to me, you know, we just had this one proposal.
Uh, yes, we did look at, um, we spoke with a couple of different vendors, including MySchoolBucks, who we're currently using for collecting of other fees. Um, the fee structure across them all was pretty consistent. Um, it seems to be the standard that they're all using for ticketing solutions. Um, Hometown Ticket, just because it's the one that PAA uses for all of the state comp or the district competitions and state competitions. Um, our sta- our uh families have a little bit of familiarity with and we know that they work, so um we felt that was the reason to go with them.
And um, Mr. Anderson, I don't know if you're the one to answer this question, but could um, could you or somebody please just describe the ways in which this would change what, change from what our current practice is? You show up at a a football game or the you want to get tickets to the play. Um, how does us using Hometown change what people have experienced so far?
Um, I I know that the intent is to, long, long term, is to minimize the amount of cash being handed around within the district. Um, so hopefully there will be a good adoption of it and that'll minimize that cash that's changing hands, but I don't think um in all our discussions, there's never been a place where we're saying we're going to stop accepting cash at the gate. Um, we may provide other options, um, and maybe encourage people to use other options, but I don't think there's currently a plan to do away with uh cash acceptance.
It also digitizes the tickets themselves, so it could eventually reduce paper tickets. Um, it would send a QR code, you could access that if you needed to print it and bring it, you could, but you could also access it from a mobile device. Um, it has been described to us as being a way of managing who owns the ticket, so it's less likely to get reproduced um without authorization. Uh, so that each person gets a unique ticket to them, and uh so that's one of the benefits that was described as well.
And yeah, we had also gotten some information that it accommodates um some benefits that we already provide to our students to get free admittance to events or uh free tickets, like for graduation, it can accommodate that as well as paid tickets, correct?
Correct, we have the option to do free tickets as well as paid.
Will any of the fees related to the new fee structure um be passed on to the purchasers of the tickets?
No.
How is that the district paying for that?
Yeah, it'll come, it'll, instead of being added on to the ticket, it'll come out of the ticket cost on the district side, correct?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section seven A, Retirement and Resignation. Can I have a motion to accept the following retirement and resignation as listed?
Larson moved?
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just gonna call out appreciation for Ms. Borzilo for nineteen years of service.
Thank you. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven B is Appointment. Can I have a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act one sixty-eight of twenty fourteen?
Larson moved?
For a second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven C, Leave of Absence. Can I have a motion to approve the following leave request?
Larson moved?
Shelton second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven D, McGloin LLC Agreement. Can I have a motion to request approval of an agreement with McGloin LLC to provide services as an interim curriculum supervisor for the remainder of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year at a cost of six hundred and sixty dollars per day, prorated for half days?
Larson moved?
For a second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a quick question, um, I don't know. Is, are we backfilling or is this a decision that we need to temporarily fill and then we're gonna later on have a permanent replacement?
Yes, absolutely. So this is intended to finish the year while we post and have applications for the STEM supervisor position.
Okay, this is, alright, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight A, Educational Services Agreement. Can I have a motion to approve the following educational service agreement for a district student? This agreement covers reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Shelton moved.
Carson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine A, um, we're on, we're at Curriculum and Instruction. A is Student Educational Excursions. Can I have a motion to approve the student educational excursions as listed below?
The tally moved. Read them in second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
These are the fun ones.
Yeah.
Yep.
That consensus already.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine B, AP Psychology Course Textbook Purchase. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of Meyer Psychology textbook by Nathan Hammer for the AP course with six-year digital access from the 24-25 budget year in the amount of $32,441.85?
Words moved?
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now at section 10, Policy. One item there. Item 10A is the policy, um, 950 Booster Clubs in Organizations. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 915 Booster Clubs in Organizations and the corresponding AR?
Carson moved.
Wait them in second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is the second time this policy has, um, come to the full board.
And I see that there were some comments from our last, uh, our first reading that have been incorporated. You can see the cleanup in the draft that's attached.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11 is Other Items. Um, 11A is DCIU Board of Directors Candidate Nomination. Can I have a motion to accept a nomination for a board member from Havreford Township School District to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing January 10th, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026?
Carson moved.
I'd like to nominate Latonya Lee.
I think I need one more second.
Oh, second.
So we have a first and I need a second.
For a second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Now any discussion there?
Like to nominate Latonya Lee?
I'll second that if we need a second.
We're not, hearing no other, uh, nominations there. So we have Latonya Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 11B. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution appointing Latonya Lee to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing January 10th, 2025 and ending on June 30th, 2026?
Carson moved.
For a second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd just add a thank you to Dr. Larson for her service in that capacity and a appreciation that Latonya Lee is stepping up to fill that important liaison role.
You're here.
Thank you. Item 12, Public Comments Related to Other Items. This section of public co- comments, as I mentioned earlier, is related to anything that's either not or not, either is or not on the agenda. Um, I did not have anyone signed up to speak. However, if there's anyone that would like to speak, please state your name, confirm your residency. You will have three minutes to speak. The timer will end, will sound, that is when your comments are concluded.
Thank you. Good evening. Todd Hall. I reside in Havreford Township. Uh, before I begin, I'd like to say I had the opportunity to tour the high school last night as we have an incoming freshman. It was a very impressive facility. So thank you, Finance and Facilities Committee people. And to move on to my, uh, next points here, um, I'd like to thank the Manoa Elementary Administration, who in conjunction with the PTO recently offered the opportunity for parents to be art class volunteers. I enjoyed participating. It was a good way to use up time off at the end of the school year and to, uh, visit our fifth grader before he enters middle school. Uh, the suggestion of there being more opportunities for parental visits and involvement in our schools was made in the past few years by a board member. For over a year now, the format of the board reports section of the meeting has been changed. This didn't come out of nowhere. The logic and reasoning supporting the change is solid, but we can't forget this came out of situations including a, uh, board member bringing to the board's attention her concerns often raised by parents, teachers and students in the district. The people have, have an immediate relationship to the School District of Havreford Township. In other words, grassroots pure democracy, as opposed to concerns of the Pennsylvania School Board Association, a group of people in Harrisburg who hide behind their private status that they're funded with pro- public money. We can look at another board in Havreford Township that also experiences a variety of opinions, the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners. They have a section for board reports at the end of the meeting. Topics raised in recent months have included abortion, the federal election, even conflicts in the Middle East. These issues have a minimal, the best relationship to Havreford Township. The viewpoints raised by individual commissioners may not reflect the views of all other commissioners. In fact, I know they don't. However, I support the right for their elected, uh, voices to be heard in this format. They have not raised any concerns about this segment of the meeting conflicting with regulations of the Sunshine Act or open records laws. The board member who's spoken up for the concerns of our students, faculty and parents, including when a professional development speaker made a racist and hateful statement about white people, uh, was done. And when a board member must use public comment to make their thoughts known, it raises a concern about the extent to which the board is properly functioning. Sadly, there are times members have shown little to no regard for the fact they're directing an organization using the public's money. When suggestions are, were made for reducing costs, the response indicated that they were attacking public education. Or when discussing programs in the school, a response was you can't put a price on it. Uh, thankfully, we have a member who brings firsthand accounts, uh, to the, uh, district of the, in the district to the table. This is a board that often stresses the importance of feeling a sense of belonging, talks about diversity, talks about inclusion. And it's disappointing that the board is not cultivating a feeling of belonging within it or supporting of diversity of thought or inclusion of comments by its own members. Thank you.
Item 13, Report Run Executive Session. The board met, uh, before tonight's meeting to discuss with council agency business, that if discussed in public would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of information protected by law that concerned a confidential student-related matter and district security related to the notification of power school data breach. Item 14A, The Next Regular Public Board Meeting Will Be Held on January 23rd, 2025 at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Carson moved.